March 13th of 2023. Tonight, we will start with the offering of the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice President Laura Toye. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Toye.
Ooh, sorry.
This is a study meeting. This meeting will set the agenda for the 1,965th regular meeting on March 22nd of 2023, where all tonight's items will be voted on officially. Tonight's items will be studied. You may hear motions from the council in regards to an approving, a denying, or a referral to a committee. These items will not be voted on tonight, but will carry forward to be possibilities at that regular meeting. We have a full council this evening, and we have set aside 30 minutes at the beginning for any members of the audience to address us on any items not on the agenda tonight. Do we have anybody wishing to address us? I see none. Is there anybody at the council at this time who'd like to make any announcements? I see none. We'll go right to the agenda. New business. Item number one is a request for a one-year extension of the waiver approval for petition 2021120225 submitted by Portillo's that was previously approved by the council on February 28th of 2022 involving the construction and operation of a freestanding full-service restaurant with a drive-up window at 13,000 Middlebelt Road located on the east side of Middlebelt between the CSX Railroad right-of-way and Schoolcraft Road in the northwest quarter of Section 25. That is citing Council Resolution 59-22. Is anybody here from Portillo's tonight? Please come on up to the podium. I'm going to ask Mr. Toramina, would you want to kick us off here?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, items one and two are related, so item two is a companion petition by Portillo's regarding their request for a Class C liquor license. But this is an extension. This is a plan that you approved roughly one year ago, and it is an outlot to be developed in front of the Meyer store on Middlebelt Road. Portillo's is a full-service restaurant. This particular site would accommodate a 7,900-square-foot facility, 184 interior seats with 44 exterior seats and the outdoor dining patio. It does include drive-up window facilities. It was approved by Planning Commission and as well as council unanimously, excuse me. And as I said, it does include a Class C license, which I believe was adjusted to a tavern license, so it's a beer and wine only. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you'd like to add, or?
No, I'd answer questions if you'd like. My name's Randy Guzzi. I'm Vice President of Real Estate for Portillo's.
Okay. Ms. Toye?
Yes, thanks. Mr. Chair, if I may to, I'm sorry, what your last name is?
Mr. Guzzi.
Mr. Guzzi, what, why did you want us to extend this?
It has taken us longer to permit this than we had anticipated. We have had additional questions and calculations for Wayne County that they required. They required a lot of calculations on the storm sewer, some things that were downstream from us that were, you know, predate us by 25 years. We have had some work with Wayne County on some surveys, additional surveys, and some traffic improvements that they've requested that you all have seen. And then there's some issues with Meyer and some of the easements and things we're working on in the background, but the real driver has been candidly is some of the questions that Wayne County has had and some of the permitting there.
Sorry for some of your red tape on that. That's hard because I've heard good things about the restaurant, et cetera. So I'm going to offer the extension for one year. Mr. Chair, if I may, as a motion, and we'll see where my colleagues want to go with it.
Is there an objection to that being on consent? Mr. Barr?
No objection, just a quick comment to say I know there's a lot of residents that are thrilled to know you're asking for this extension because I've had a lot of questions since over the last year, like, where's the Portillo's you guys approved? So glad you're here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm actually going to Chicago in a couple of weeks, and that's one of our stops, so.
Good.
Item number two is also you. It's a request for a one-year extension of the waiver approval petition 202112026 submitted by Portillo's, previously approved on February 28th of 2022 involving the utilization of a tavern license for the sale of beer and wine for consumption on the premises in connection with the full-service restaurant at 13,000 Middlebelt Road citing Council Resolution CR 68-22. Mr. Toramina, you already addressed this, I believe. Is there anything else to add? Okay. Is there any motion from the council, Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to the petitioner, just one quick question, fully approving this, I'll be offering approving for consent. Will this do that right now? But the question I do have for you, is your red tape thinning out, and when do you think we're going to be breaking ground?
Yes, we are nearing the end of the red tape, and so we have made our final submittal into Wayne County. We have answered all their questions. They have said satisfactorily, and we expect that that will result in those permits being released, which will result in other permits being released here in the next 30 days or so. And so our hope is to start construction in the next 30 to 45 days and be eating hot dogs and Italian beef in the fourth quarter of the year.
That's what we like to hear. That's what we like to hear. Thank you.
Sounds good. So we have an approving, I believe, for consent. Any objections from the council? Is there any audience communication at item one or two? I don't think I called it on one, one or two comment. I see none. Thank you, sir. We appreciate everything. We look forward to those sandwiches and hot dogs.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number three is a site plan petition from the Planning Commission, petition 2023020801 submitted by Kozak Construction on behalf of Hop Cat Restaurant Company requesting to remodel the exterior of the restaurant formerly known as Cladagh Irish Pub at 1,000, excuse me, 17800 Hagerty Road on the east side of Hagerty between Six Mile and Seven Mile in the southwest quarter of Section 7. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a quest by Hop Cat to renovate the Cladagh or the former Cladagh pub located on Hagerty Road. I think everyone is familiar with the style and the design of that building. All of the facade treatments are going to be removed from that building and replaced with more modern appearance, something consistent with Hop Cat's trade identity. As you can see, complete change within the color scheme of the building. That includes all new materials, mostly new materials around the building. There's some cultured stone that would remain along the base, but all of the apparent yellow and brown areas is a combination of wood and steel siding. The seating, while the interior of the restaurant is being renovated, the overall seating count will remain the same, and that's why this is before you as a site plan and not as an amendment to the waiver use. Planning Commission reviewed this. There were some minor adjustments to the, to part of the building in the front, but other than that, they liked the design and approved it. I will mention one item, and that is the trademark cat's eyes on the side of the building. This would be classified as a mural, and while under the current zoning regulations, this would have to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals if it's determined to be assigned under the changes that you're going to be reviewing in a couple of weeks, which you mentioned earlier, the public hearing is scheduled in April. This will be treated, this mural will be treated differently and will require your approval only as well instead of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So depending on the timing, I suspect that if you agree with those changes to the zoning regulations, your action this evening could solidify the approval for that particular design. Otherwise, it would have to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Question for you and for Paul, approving it now or at our next meeting before the changes are implemented in the Vision 21 Plan, that won't be a problem?
I don't see that as a problem.
Okay.
Because it's going to, if it changes, it's going to allow you to consider it anyway at that time. It would have to, in front of council, and if it doesn't get changed, it would have to go through the ZBA. I don't think it presents a problem. It's just which direction we go, how quick that gets approved.
Art, you heard that?
I agree. I think if their action this evening is to approve this, this plan, I think the language of the resolution indicates either going to the Zoning Board of Appeals, but allowing, but if the ordinance is amended in the meantime, that your approval would be final on this item.
Okay, I like that. Anything else from the council?
Yeah.
I think Ms. Toye, and then we'll go to Donavick.
We're going to hear from the petitioner, right, or we're not?
I, for...
Can you, do you mind if I go to the petitioner for a minute?
Not at all.
Oh, thank you. Sir, I'm sorry, what was your name?
My name is Kevin Kozak. I'm the President of Kozak Construction and the owner's rep for Hop Cat.
Nice to be here. Thank you, Mrs. Kozak. I just wondered, do you know, for our viewing audience, perhaps, you know, the kind of food they serve and?
Sure, sure. It's elevated bar food is what they like to call it, but they are famous for their cosmic fries, but hamburgers, french fries, soups, salads, sandwiches. They do about 75% food sales, about 25% alcohol sales.
It's a little different than the former Irish pub that was there. Yeah, okay. And how soon do you want to get going, pretty quick?
We were actually given an interior building permit last week, so construction has commenced on the inside of the building. We are trying very hard to open at the end of June with the approval of the exterior.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer an approving if my colleagues don't have an objection on consent so that they can get going and not have to face a lot of more hurdle. Thank you.
Donavick and Barr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for being here tonight. Pretty excited when I heard this, saw this come across your desk because this is, you know, a very well-known chain, and it just goes to show that people want to do business in our community, so I was excited to see this restaurant choose Livonia. Question about the parking, the parking's not changing, it's going to stay the same?
That is correct.
And then to Mr. Toramina, since this was a previous restaurant with a liquor license, we don't have to approve any liquor license separate from this, or?
No, it's just a transfer that's administrative through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Great. Well, good luck, and I'm looking forward to eating here. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
Mr. Barr?
Yeah, so I too am excited to see this come to the community. I will say candidly, though, I'm disappointed by the rendering that came for us. Just that area over there, I would say has a pretty high-class feel to the buildings that are there, and I understand Hop Cat's different from some of the restaurants that are there. I understand that, but the Cladagh building in particular, I've just always seen as a cool building with a lot of really rich elements to it. And I'm not an architect, but when I first looked at the rendering that we have here, it seems like a major step down in far as quality materials and just appearance from what is there. And I'm not, I'm not saying make it look like Cladagh, but there's a number of features there that I'm just wondering why, it seems like we're just covering them and for a cheaper looking building. And I just specifically, I mean, again, I'm not an architect, so I'm out of my area of expertise here, but you take like the feature on the southwest corner, it kind of looks like it's just been covered up. There's a number of design elements in the Cladagh that just, I feel like give it a more upscale feel that I think have been covered up, not to mention just the signs that I'm not sure are going to make it through ZBA. So I was wondering just if you wanted to comment on that.
Sure, sure. I do disagree with you. The building's falling apart. All of those elements that you speak of, the southwest corner is stone, it's dilapidated and falling apart, the windows, you can stick your fingers through. So actually, all the stuff that we're doing, that's a corrugated metal panel. It'll last 100 years. All the windows are being replaced. All we're doing on the side here where the south patio is, there is wood that they have in quaint detail. It is all completely rotted away as well. We're putting wood back in its place. It's all going to be a red oak cedar stained a couple of different colors. A lot of the stone is remaining on the building. A lot of the ephesus remains on the building. One of the characters that we're pulling away is the upper portions of the ephesus have stone that looks like it's falling out of the ephesus. Those are coming out of there. Again, I'm not an architect or designer either. I agree with that change because it cleans the building up, makes it look a little bit more modern and sleek. And then that chimney that's there is just a false chimney. It serves no purpose, and we want to clean it up and get it out of the way.
Okay, appreciate the explanation, and it's understandable. I would, not necessarily saying that I'm going to deny this, I would like to keep this on regular, and I'd also, I'd like to offer a resolution to put into the committee the whole for us to consider, just to look at some of those design elements a little more, and it'll give me more time to think and look at it over the next couple of weeks for a vote, so, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Barr. So I would take that as an opportunity, if you do want to propose any additional changes, that you can send them to us before the next meeting. If you wanted to do that. You don't have to, but if you want to. Anybody else from the council? I see none. Anybody from the audience on item three? I see none. So you have an approving for the regular, and you have a potential committee meeting as well. So please come back to the next meeting. That'll be on, excuse me, about 22nd. Okay? Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you.
We'll move to item number four, request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase computers using the state of Michigan contract pricing, coming to us from the Division of Police and Livonia Fire and Rescue to replace the computers in the police station patrol vehicles and at the fire stations that are out of warranty and at end-of-life from budgeted funds. Chief, Captain, good evening.
Good evening, President Jolly and council members. At first, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to introduce the newest member of our administration, Captain Eric Marcot. He joined our administration in January, and he will present the agenda item for you tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, President Jolly and fellow city council members. I'm here this evening representing Chief Karolsky and the Police Department to request authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase computers using the state of Michigan government contract pricing. The current computer systems within the police and fire departments are out of warranty, they're at the end of their life, and replacement parts are limited and are no longer available. The police department is looking to replace most of our current laptops, which are used for the in-car terminals and our police vehicles, and almost half of our desktop computers throughout the police department. The fire department is looking to replace 22 new desktop computers to replace existing computers throughout their fire stations. The cost of replacing these computers will be split between us and the fire department, which will come from the budgeted funds in the police and fire department accounts. If there are any questions regarding this, I'd be happy to answer it this time.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. I always point out that when it says waive the sealed bid process, we're leveraging really awesome pricing through the state of Michigan, so you guys do your due diligence to go the extra mile and save the city some money. Everything looks in order. I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Ms. McIntyre, did you have something to say?
Yes, I did. First of all, apologies for that. I always have my phone off, so I'm not sure what happened. First of all, nice to see you, Captain Marcot, and we're very happy to have you as part of the administrative team over there. You're great. You're joining two other great captains, as you know. I have no objections to this being placed on the consent, and Mr. McCullough correctly pointed out, we waive sealed bids because we have an opportunity to do, to get a much better deal than through a sealed bid. One of the, one of the things that's, that has been of interest to me and some concern, although it's really not my business to be concerned about it, and when I've had the opportunity to do ride-alongs with your officers, there is so much data input, typing and reading that has to be done by our officers, oftentimes as they're moving, right, because they're running down a license plate. With the new technology, is there an opportunity for us to step up the voice recognition and the reading, both voice recognition, right, so instead of having to type everything in, our officers could run queries through voice commands and questions, but also for things to be read out to them to eliminate the need for them to read, you know, to read text while they're doing their job?
No, that's a great question. I am aware that our laptops, all of our laptops within our police vehicles are equipped with microphones in them.
Okay.
Trying to figure out whether Clemis, who we utilize as software, is compatible with that. I would have to do some research with that. I'm not aware of any other departments that utilize that option, however, that doesn't mean that it can't be done. Our officers receive annual training on emergency vehicle operations, as you know.
I know, they do.
And part of that training is for them to multitask, learn the multitasking, and when they are in a position of running license plates or receiving messages, they're asked to pull off the road in a safe manner and do that so they can do that safely. And I like to think because of our EVO training within our department, we have very minimal amount of at-fault accidents.
I know we do, and I know the training, and I know MMRMA, our Risk Management Association, is always in favor of, and we take all of the recommendations from MMRMA very seriously to ensure the safety of our officers and ensure that we're not at fault, or, you know, that there's limited liability for anyone or risk. But sometimes, as you know, it's not possible to always pull over when you're running a plate or you need to get information. So thank you very much, and just, I think this is a needed upgrade, and thank you very much for the presentation.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else from the council, is there any audience comments? I see none. Congratulations, Captain.
Thank you, sir.
Happy to have you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll move to item number five, an award of contract from the Engineering Division for the 2023 sidewalk and pavement replacement program. Water main breaks. I don't know quite how to read this, to be honest with you. Dash water main breaks, comma, contract 23-F. Punctuation seems a little strange there, but Mr. Zalinsik, maybe you could explain to me.
Sheer council president and council members, as you know, each year we have our water group go out and fix water main breaks in the middle of the night or during the day on the major roads, some of our local roads, so we have to go out and fix those. So this, this contract is for that particular situation where we have to go fix concrete asphalt that's been damaged as a result of a water main break that has occurred. Typically, in the past, it's been a two-year contract. This year, we actually went and go, went out for a one-year contract with the opportunity to extend it one year. As you know, concrete prices have gone up significantly. So typically, again, we want to give an opportunity to fix those water main breaks that happen through the fall and get them completed by the end of June in Phase 1, and then Phase 2 locations that happen again through March in the summertime will be fixed just before mid-October. If there's a restoration issue only in the green belt, typically you'll see a sawhorse out there, that's DPW will come out, and they'll fix the area that has been disturbed in the green belt area between the curb and sidewalk, along with doing any sprinkler repairs. Engineering's been tasked with fixing the pavement, getting that squared away, and then have the DPW come back out and get the restoration taken care of. With that, as you look at the low bidder, there was four bids taken for this project that's been omitted, and the low bidder is Great Lakes Contracting Solutions, who just was previously approved at the regular meeting for doing our selective slab program. They've done the program the last two years. Again, as you can see, the competitive pricing at $300,000, as the next one was rotunded at $342,000. Obviously, they're going to be working simultaneously, most likely with the selective slab locations itself. So again, we took advantage of the savings, there's $42,000 savings. We'll fix those locations that residents unfortunately have to deal with, with the water main breaks. We ask if they need additional gravel, additional hardscape in the interim to contact the DPW at 734-466-2655 until that permanent repair can be done. As you know, it's very difficult during the winter months. So with that, we're asking your approval, any amount of $300,760.88 for Great Lakes Solutions to fix those water main breaks throughout the city, and if warranted, we would extend the contract in 2024. Thank you.
And what's your extension specifically if they want to contact you?
Two, two, five, six.
Ms. Toye, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I don't have an extension, so, no. Mr. Zalinsik, when these water main breaks happen, I know that experience in the past has been that, you know, I hate to name names, but Wayne County does our water system or the, you know, the DSW. Do we get reimbursed for any of that at times, depending on the break and how it happened, blah, blah, blah? Help me out.
So typically GLWA, if there's a spike in the pressure, then that's the dealing with the DPW director. There's any, any issues, they would be monitoring that, and then go back to the Great Lakes Water Authority. As you know, the rate's coming up soon, so that'd be more of a question for the director as he has a pulse on that, but typically, we haven't seen anything other than we had the break by three or four years ago on Stark Road where obviously that was a big issue.
Yeah.
As you know, GLW's been investing in the city. They put the new 40-inch-long Schoolcraft Road from Beach Daily to Middlebelt. As you see right now, they're working to do a redundant line along 275 up to 14 Mile Road, so when we lose water main, that we have another feed so we don't have to be out of water for three days during the hottest month of the year, right? So they are, they are doing some proactive measures, however, I do believe the spikes have caused much water main breaks. We do about 100 a year. It's mostly just related to weather. As you know, we've had cold weather, and then it gets warmed up, or just the age of the infrastructure, which again, with the approval that you guys are working with right now, HM is doing, you know, about $6 million worth of investment, three miles worth of water mains, so we try to stay as best we can ahead of the game.
Sure, okay. No, I appreciate that explanation because it certainly becomes a question as, you know, you look into some of those old wood systems they still have, et cetera. So because I think that Mr. Zalinsik is a wonderful city engineer and knows his stuff, I'm going to offer an approving, Mr. Chair, on this contract. Thank you.
Any other comment from the council? We'll put that on consent if there is no objection. Is there any audience comments on number five? I see none. We'll go to item six, a proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinance as amended from the Department of Law to amend Section 010 to Title 10, Chapter 21, impounded vehicles in order to reflect the requested changes to the vehicle redemption conditions and costs and fees, in example, towing fees, storage fees, et cetera. Mr. Burney?
Good evening. As council's aware, council approved, previously approved the towing contract of Livonia Towing. This is kind of a bookkeeping to make our ordinance comport with the contract that council approved with Livonia Towing. It just changes the motion to comport with the contract.
So you're looking for a first reading on this?
Yes.
Okay. Does somebody want to offer a first reading tonight?
I can do that unless somebody else wants to.
No, I know, I mean, just to go through, just, I know we can't. I know. I know. I just think we need to put something down going into the next meeting, right? All right. Item number six, we got a first reading going to the next meeting.
Scott, I can wait till afterwards.
I was going to go to audience communication first, just so if you wanted to comment on anything that may come up. Is there any audience comments, close out the meeting on anything not on the agenda tonight? I see none, Mr. Barr?
Yeah, this is loosely related to number six. Well, I have a question through the, it's different, that's why I held off. It's technically a different item. Through the chair to Paul, if there was a tweak I wanted to offer related to that zoning ordinance, if I, if I put that, asked to have that on our regular, actually, could I just ask to have that included in the public hearing on April 3rd? Are we? And let me tell you exactly what I'm saying, and you tell me if this makes sense. And this is something I've had on my mind for a while, and I've just been waiting. It's, it's not something that I want to go through the whole public hearing process just for this, but if we could include it with something, I would. I'd like to consider renaming the Livonia Vision 21 ordinance, just simply the Livonia zoning ordinance. I think that title, Livonia Vision 21, it's caught me a number of times when we have things. I'm like, wait, Vision 21, what are we doing here again? And as time goes on, that's going to be more and more confusing for people, and so, and I think the proper way to do that is just a matter of strike-throughs and changing the name, and probably needs to go through the whole public hearing process. So I guess my thought was if we have a public hearing coming up on the 3rd to do some changes, I'd like, I'd like to consider that we look at that as well and wonder if we concluded in that.
Yeah, I, I will look into that. I don't see why we couldn't. That seems like a rather simple part of it.
Yeah.
It's not changing anybody's, usually have the public service, the public hearings because people's rights are at stake dealing with the zoning matters, and that's not the case in the title of it. So I don't think it'll be a problem, but I will look into it.
But am I correct, to do something like that, technically, we would need a public hearing because we're changing the zoning?
Technically, it's a zoning, but...
So if, if we could include that as an item to consider, obviously, council would have to vote on it, but I'm purposely offering it now. I've been waiting for the chance to include it with something else because it's not a to include it with something else because it's not a big item that really warrants that process for itself. So, thanks.
Could I go back to the last one? Mr. Jolly, I'm not sure if anybody No, I know. officially offered number six for a first reading? Yeah.
Yes, she did. Toy did it.
Yeah.
Okay. Neither of us caught it. No, that's why I asked specifically, so it was like, and then Toy did it. I mean, I just, normally, we write something down. So like, Toy offered a first, I think we're good.
It'll be on the regular for a first reading.
Right. We just don't want tonight to end. It's just so much fun. We just want to stay together and hang out and use up the next 20 minutes at least. Anybody else have any closing comments?
Audience?
I don't see any. We'll call it.
Did you go to audience communication?
Any audience, I think I generally said it for everybody.
Oh, sorry.
Does anybody else want to say anything? I see nothing. We'll, we'll say good evening, Livonia. Good night. Take care. Be well.
Sure.